Okay.
You can be. I'll make a motion.
Motion in a second to reconvene, all in favor, I.
All right.
Oh, same sign, I got eight forty-eight. All right, so we get to the minutes from the twenty-seventh. And that, excuse me, the nineteenth and then the twenty-seventh.
Right.
The one that I had on the twelve sixteen judicial.
Juvenile detention.
That should be juvenile detention. Other than that, I didn't see any.
I didn't either. I'll make that motion to approve the minutes of the December nineteenth and December twenty-seven.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for the meeting minutes from the nineteenth and the twenty-seventh, any other discussion? All in favor, I.
All right.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. All right, general public concerns, nobody on Zoom. Nobody here. All right. Looks like appointment of chair and vice chair is for the calendar year twenty twenty-three.
Well, and fears in keeping with our longstanding tradition. That we rotate that. So I would make the appointment of Sandy Lonnie as the chairperson for twenty twenty-three and David Lee as the vice chairperson of twenty twenty-three.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll second.
In a second. For Sandy Lonnie as the chairperson, chairwoman. The.
I'm just gonna say she's not the chairman. Woman, person.
Saves or serves a device. All in favor, I. Oh, that wasn't very. Wasn't very.
Sandy is intending to be on vacation every other meeting. So you'll have something to do.
All right, so that means that I'm done.
We'll turn the gavel over to Sandy.
There we are.
All right.
This thing, you know, you can use it. Two or three ways you can. I've I've never taken it out when I sat here, but.
There's five times you should have.
Yeah, do you want to rotate now, or do you want to just pass the gavel over and you can wait and do it after the meeting?
Uh, yeah, you pass it over and we'll. We are able to get through all this miscellaneous stuff.
Perfect.
All right, so we need to go on act on various boards of supervisor appointments and Tricia's given us the list here. Um, are there any changes to the list? Has everybody had a chance to look it over?
Yeah.
Okay. So. Mine look good.
I don't know that I would want to pass any of mine is some of them are kind of in the middle of them.
And that's the thing, once you've been on a board, you're getting used to how operates and you know.
Yeah. Yeah, I wouldn't, um, but I will work first on anybody right now.
I would. I would tell you that I I ran into. One of the mayors from Bradgate and he asked who the people were that took care of the fire. Um, the trustees. And I said, I'd have to check on that, so we're gonna hide. In order to make sure I tell him. Who? Um. I knew you were gonna ask that.
Is it?
Yeah, they just had a new mayor elected.
They did?
Last year.
Last year.
Well, we come.
And what did I'm sorry, what did he ask?
Right, yeah, he just asked about the trustees for the fire department, said he wanted to know if if we ever, if they're ever gonna. Put allocate more money. Because these smaller departments are running on teams and when they only get, I'm just gonna say. Five thousand dollars, he said. That money doesn't buy nothing.
Right.
It doesn't.
And. They have to stay in compliance, they have to do fundraisers and I said, you know, you can come up on. This week and when we're redoing our, and he said he would try, but I was guessing. Redgate might feel a little slick coming in, so he. But I told him I would. Check, so.
Okay.
I did that, we'll see what we can come up with and go from there.
So, any, nobody has any. Changes, additions, or corrections to our boards?
I'll make a motion to keep everything down to the designated humble independent. Well, we have to take that totally your boards.
Oh.
On the board. Everything on the board stays, we have to, we have to act on that.
Do we have to act on the, uh, crew following board members, is that a separate? That might be accordingly in this moment too, on the back page, there's, uh, well, several. Well, conservation board of adjustment zoning and planning board of health, that's affairs. Imminent domain.
Didn't we need one for, who is?
You have safety committee on there, because that'll switch.
Yeah, also noted safety committee.
Health insurance.
Page three.
What's Peterson? He's one there.
So safety committee board chair and vice chair.
Okay. I see.
Health insurance is. Rick at the bottom.
I see.
Mm-hmm, so it looks like we just go ahead and approve all of them by.
That's what I said, prove all of them down to the end of.
Yeah, yep.
Safety committee.
I'll second Dave's motion.
Okay, we have a. Motion in a second, all those in favor?
All right.
I, oops, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay. Motion carries.
Motion to designate humble independent newspapers, official county newspaper for the calendar year of twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
All right.
Those. Motion carries. Okay, we need to set the mileage rate for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. I know the federal. Um, rate has gone up, you know, it's gone up to.
Is it fifty-eight-five? I think it is. I know that's what Pocahontas is at.
Yeah, Pocahontas is at fifty-eight-five, yeah.
So are you wanting to go to? I'll. The rate, or you're good with fifty-five?
Fiscally conservative. But the fact that cost of travel has gone up, instead of raising it the total amount. Make a motion, we raise it one penny to fifty-six cents per mile.
Okay, I'm just putting this out here, IRS, um, issued a standard mileage rate for twenty twenty-three, five days ago, sixty-five point five.
Wow.
Well, so I was gonna say, gas is going up about thirty percent.
Travel, I mean, all of my.
And repairs.
Yeah, I mean it. I think there's all of it.
Sixty-five.
And I know, and I know Pope. Pocahontas was thinking about raising theirs up, Clarence was telling me about that.
I don't think you need to raise it at all, but I feel sixty cents.
I would second Dave's motion at sixty.
Okay. There's a motion in a second for sixty cents per mile. All those in favor?
I.
All right.
Okay, um, set meal reimbursement rate for county employees attending training. I know currently we're at sixty dollars and that includes meal and tip, but that's for the entire day, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Well, food hasn't gone down either.
Yeah, it's gone up.
Everything. Make a motion that we raise that ten dollars a day to seventy.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor to. Reimburse rate of seventy dollars per day, including tip and tip and tax.
I.
All right.
Motion carries. Okay. Uh, motion, okay, we are, the next item is authorize auditor to pay certain bills before formal board approval. Kind of bills or ones, I know.
Salaries, payroll, insurance payments, unemployment, quarterly payments, and emergency expenses deemed necessary.
Dude, you give them. Nine times out of ten, we adjust our schedule to make sure that.
They get approved.
We get them approved, but we just have always done the. Give them the ability to.
Well, yeah, something might even come in between normal.
I'll make a motion. In order to pay certain bills before full month or.
Second, that motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
I. Resolution in that a local. About the resolution.
That is a resolution.
Next one.
The next one.
That's right, there it is.
There.
Twenty twenty-three dash oh four.
No, that's that's a farmer market, farmer market.
No, but.
On the minute, oh, man, oh, two, oh, three, this is oh, four.
Oh, it does.
Authorizing the county auditor to pay bills when board is.
I wasn't looking at that, Dave, I was only going by this.
But it's the bottom, it's the next to the other three.
We will, you're allowed to do a resolution then.
Resolution.
So you're gonna change your motion, whoever made the motion.
Oh, that was me.
Just change it to a resolution.
All right. I'll I'll change my motion for adopt resolution twenty twenty-three oh four. To authorize county auditor pay bills in the board to add in second for the following purchases with salaries, payroll. Previously approved by the board, insurance payments, unemployment, quarterly report payments, emergency expenses, huge necessary that is coming. Hopefully, there's nothing more in that except token.
Well, I'll second their motion for the resolution.
Hey. Dave Lee?
Yes.
Eric Underberg?
Yes.
Rick Peterson?
Hi.
Bruce Raymers?
Hi.
Motion carries.
All right.
Our resolution carries. Okay, so we shouldn't have had the.
Well.
The one above, so I'm just gonna go through them like that. This is the.
Again.
This is an agenda.
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 And then I did the cheat sheet one, I. Sorry. Put it as a revolution, so it will stay.
You didn't tell me.
We're all right.
Yeah, that's fine, it's a technicality.
Okay. Okay. All right, so let's see, the next one would be, um, adopt resolution twenty twenty-three oh one. Or market, okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt twenty. Twenty-three dash oh one, a resolution concerning farm-to-market construction projects.
Time second.
Oh, boy, Bruce.
All right.
Then is there anything on there that we need to?
No, it's. Same, same as always.
Okay, um, Dave.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Rick Peterson.
Hi.
Bruce Lee.
Hi.
Bruce Lee.
Bruce Lee. No, Bruce Lee, he is not, no.
Well, he could be.
Okay. Okay, motion, our resolution carries. All right, okay, then we have also adopt the resolution twenty twenty-three dash two, authorizing the county engineer to close roads for repairs.
I'll make that function.
I'll second.
Twenty twenty-three dash.
Dave Lee?
Yes.
Eric?
I.
Rick Peterson?
I.
Bruce Raymers?
Yes.
Okay, resolution carries. All right, then we have the adopt the resolution twenty twenty-three dash three, a resolution adopting the master matrix construction evaluation.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, Kate Lee?
Yes.
Eric Underberg?
I.
Rick Peterson?
Hi.
Bruce Raymers?
Hi.
Looking at name tags now, all right. Resolution hearings. All right, you already did that one. Hey.
Ah, I'm off there.
Hey, it looks now that we have. Jenna Petter's or discussion on drainage levies.
Yes, um, so it was brought to my attention that you guys wanted to do an April building. And I think they gave you the paper on the laws for drainage. We're not supposed to bill and the less. It is at the same time as we do property taxes in September. So. A lot of the reasoning behind that. Is, well, it makes it easier for us, but we don't, we have to give them at least a thirty-day notice. On it. Any taxes that we do. If we don't give them the thirty-day notice, then we're running into a problem. So. With this next billing, Teresa said that it was only gonna be like around two hundred thousand. And I think if I understand right, there's gonna be some more billings coming in the first of the year. So if we could just wait and do it all in September. It would be better. We'd also be following the law.
Why, why can't I have this ready for March?
Technically, we're supposed to only do it for September, Rick. With property taxes.
Uh, don't we do our property tax twice a year?
It's only supposed to be the first.
We only build them.
In installment.
Yeah, we bill them once a year and that's in September.
And that's something that needs to be changed in legislature, I'd say.
What's that?
To be able to levy more than one year.
But we have levied in March, yeah, we have.
We have, but we want to touch still according to the law. The only thing you need to look at too is we just did a million dollar one. Are some of these farmers gonna be able to afford to do a March one?
Yes. The the gist of, uh. Doing it twice a year if needed was to keep the interest on their. Payments down and.
So the other thing to think of too, though, is if these farmers don't pay it off, and we have had this happen in the past with March payments. Their their property goes to tax sale. And then when it goes to tax sale, you're talking to an investor outside of Humble. Is picking this up and they're. Making money on it. And it makes it more. Straining on the farmer to try and pay. Pay it, usually what happens is the bank will pay that, because they don't want to lose the property.
I wouldn't, why, I mean, that's a possibility, but.
It it has happened in the past.
On a grain, you let me?
Yes. Yep. I didn't know you guys didn't know that, but yes, we have drainage that go to tax sale. And believe me. Taxill. Holders, they're, they love drainage. Because they know it's gonna get paid.
Mm-hmm.
So. It's just something to think about, guys. It it just makes me, we're one of the very new counties that ever do a March.
So you're figuring. That if you combine everything that could be levied. In March. Isn't right now total approximately two hundred thousand.
Right about there. That's with everything that has come in up to.
That's course, that's been countywide. Countywide.
And last year was, um, the one that we did in the fall was the one.
Didn't that one include some that had been missed?
Yeah.
That was, yeah, that was a cleanup of like ten years, so. Levy, so that did take, get things pretty well current.
Right.
Pretty well current, so the two hundred is obviously. Pretty recent, uh, levies.
Yeah.
Or expenses or.
Yeah.
There's a new. You do have some more bills coming in, correct?
Oh, yeah.
From there, yeah, there will be contractors.
Yeah, but what I've gotten up till now would be about two hundred thousand, but there is still more coming in that the guys do not get again, so.
Well, I thought we were going to have a updated list. Before the levies, so that we knew what our toll was going to be. Um, so that we can make a decision whether it's gonna be a spring or September. And if it wasn't. That's the way I remembered. Maybe I, was I the only one here in the meeting that day?
No, you were correct, we were gonna see where everything was shaking out, I mean, there's.
Because we didn't want to miss. Items, that was.
Right, didn't want to miss any, and then.
But I didn't know we were.
Ones that amount to the. The, I mean, I I haven't read that anywhere in here yet. We're we're missing it.
It's in the, it's the last three sentences. Which would move us to.
And we.
And then.
Kind of that's what we had before.
It's payable with the first half of all the taxes, which would be a September. And that's.
No, it says here, if a landowner selects that option, that is not law that it cannot be levied, I know you can levy. Twice a year, we can actually even levy six times a year if the board requests it. You don't think that's right?
You're right, because that, yeah, we brought that up four, five years ago.
Yeah, we did it several years ago, you know.
And there was a, a March one, I mean, I, we had further into it, but like I said, a lot, we're one of the only counties that does a March, both of them all do Septembers with the.
Our program. Solutions program doesn't allow for it to be. Easily done.
Yeah.
Because it is. Once a year supposedly big. And that baits based on a December first calculation of interest, and so that has to be all adjusted. Individually.
I mean, it's safe to say per Tricia's comment, it's a lot more, it's complicated enough any time that you do it. It's more complicated if you. For the process of getting a correct dollar amount and interest in March versus, it's a little simpler because of the program in September.
Hmm.
But I also go back to what Bruce said. Yeah, I mean, I think we have time.
If we have time.
Well, I I would like to see, I would like to see, we've seen it before, a breakdown of the list per district of the amounts.
And I have that, you want to have a copy real quick?
Yeah, because a part of the. A, not miss anything, that's always prudent, and B is the dual levy, March, September, is if you have a huge project that just got completed. And you know, you're not the five hundred dollar repair, but the fifty thousand dollar poss- potential landowner.
Cost thousand dollars, some of landowners owe hard thousand dollars in some of these projects.
It's a big, a big new project. That's complete and can be levied, they don't wanna pay it.
Right.
You know, they wanna pay it.
Cause I had a call on that, somebody that was. Had four, almost five hundred acres, and it was a twenty nineteen thing, and they did, they got the bill and they're like.
I wanna pay it.
Yeah.
They don't want interest, Bruce.
Correct.
And that's what the impetus was.
That we, that's something that. Oh, cause you're at the IDDA precedent.
Yeah.
If we could really press to get somebody to work on making it easier, so then solutions will make it. So our.
Slap regarding notes on the side. That was just.
I'll, I'll, I'll do some digging into this, but when I read this, I don't see anything in there that says you can't let it.
Legally, no, it just talks about payment.
Levly, levy it, I guess, but I mean, I guess the state. Is wanting it more at time of September, is wanting to some reports done for now, his interest is.
It's easier to figure everything.
One per year. Yeah, I get it, for for bookkeeping purposes, it's much easier.
Duck Stripe still the attorney?
Yes.
Maybe he beat one too. That's.
Yeah.
Now, this is the list of your, but do you have a list of all the outstanding that we haven't got bills on yet, so we can track that to make sure we're. We're following.
The only other, those were the ones that. I can get a copy of everything else, those were the only ones that. You were actually able to levy, some of them were. Maybe a couple hundred dollars, some of them have a ten-year levy on them already, um, some of them were, so basically, those are the ones that were eligible. And if you want more of the list, I can get more, but those were the ones that were eligible to be. Levied in this spring as far as I can tell.
Well, I think some of our concern here is because that's what happened last time, there were levies out there that we didn't realize that hadn't been. You know, done, so if there is some way that you have a list that you're tracking the ones that are not.
Yeah, I can get your list of the whole thing, and then.
So you guys, I mean, that way we can kind of. Watch and make sure that the things that are.
They don't get drug out.
That don't get drug out, right?
And what hurts it is the twenty-year waiver payments. Because you only see the outstanding amount. And so you're like, well, yeah, there's still outstanding, and that's.
The interest. My, our concern is, and this is what was the big discussion was last year, is that we had so many that. Didn't get levy that should have, so we need a better way to track. To ensure that we are levying everything that we should, that's all we're.
That was the point, we were gonna do it a couple of months before the.
Yeah.
Spring and a couple of months before the September and making sure that all the things that we were trying to pull into that levy were going to be taken care of. That was the reason we were.
Oh, true.
True that, man. No way that happened, well, never know. Ted Carey? What are your notations on the side, the right side, is that interest accrual?
No, those are, um, I was counting, I was figuring how many assessment notices we needed for Jana.
Oh, these are.
Any other, you disregard side one, but I.
Okay, so what a. Okay, so the la- last is just your note.
That is, yeah, I was, I was adjusting that.
So these, so if we look at just the.
The middle.
Spreadsheet. Then. This is the districts, and this is the levy amount.
And that was what I made the spreadsheet for, was to show you guys, and then I was concerned. Why I hadn't bought it in support, because I just got it done because of all of the bills coming.
Seventy-four parcels.
Seventy-four, yeah.
Funny, on eighteen, District eighteen, there's only one. Lateral. Seems like there would be more.
Which one?
In BB eighteen.
There is. But some should have them like the. And I, like I said, I can get you. Everything I saw, but then also like Trish that. You have your levies in there that. It's not gonna show you who has a ten or twenty year levy on there, so like DD two still shows that there's. Quite an amount to the load, but. It's because there were waiver payments. That haven't come in yet, so.
Right, well, if they're, it's, so, it sounds like this program is really a convoluted or tracking program.
Very cumbersome.
It is a lot of, you know.
I gotta, I gotta ask a question here, because I'm getting this consensus that. I'm just gonna use two, like that, where you said it's, it's a good twenty-year. Is your levy on? So you cannot levy a second time until that first one's collected?
Well, there's no new work line here.
Oh, but if there was, you could.
Yeah, absolutely, the 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 twenty-year thing is just a landowner that left.
That's. So what is?
Really isn't, oh, they just haven't collected it, I mean, it's been billed, but it isn't.
Yeah, and if new work has been done, then yeah, you can still levy it.
Levied in the old, yeah.
Cause there's a few of them on there that had been levied. In the fall, actually, I think there's like three or four of them, and then, but there was new work, so then that will be re-levied. If you do it in the spring or again in the fall. So anything that was new work, I just went on that.
Okay.
But once it gets levied, they can pay that anytime during the year, right?
Yes.
Because a couple of years ago.
Like first they can.
Yeah.
I mean, we put it in a holding fund.
Well, I had a gentleman a couple of years ago that, uh, was levied. And it was up around a hundred thousand or better on all the parcels. And, uh, he wanted to pay it before the first of March, so he'd save his interest, and they wouldn't let him pay it.
Then I'd have to check instantly, but if you paid it, they're still.
Was he assessed?
Yeah, he had the bill in hand.
And he wasn't able to pay?
Assessed, and they would not let him pay it. He won't pay it by the first of March, and then they let him pay it.
Aren't you only.
State taxes.
Able to make payments. Either in March or September.
You can make them anytime, but once we get a certain, uh, taxes certified and they're in the system, we can collect them, so basically, the month of July, we don't. Because we're still working on all the levy certification and all that. So we don't take money in per se, we can take it in and put it in a holding fund, but we can't apply it. So come September fir- or come August first, if we got everything done, or whenever we get it all certified, we can start taking the money in, and we could take it all the way in. Up until the, um. Basically, the Friday before the third Monday of July. Because that's when tax sale is. So if you don't have it paid by four o'clock. On that Friday, the system's shut off and you can't pay it.
You take it in, but they're still paying interest on it, right?
Well, no. No, no, we can't take anything for tax sale. Well, no. No, no, we can't take anything for tax sale.
Take it in, but you don't apply it.
For the tax sales. So up until that, that Friday before the third Monday of July, however it falls. If you don't have your taxes in by four o'clock and we close the office, we don't take it. We can't. It stops. Cause once the tax sale goes into effect, basically that four o'clock on that Friday, no monies can be collected. So, and it goes to the tax sale. And then whoever purchases that tax sale, they get all their paperwork, and then you could come in. But you have to pay that tax sale holder their money and their interest and all the fees that go along with it, so. And like I said, we have had it happen with drainage. Somebody, they didn't get paid.
Can I, uh, on this spreadsheet, what does uh levy percent mean?
That's what the computer figures up.
According to the original assessment fact, when the district is either reclassified or. Just established. It's like. Say, the first one is eighty eight percent, so. Wait, eighty eight, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Let me see, what's a better answer here?
And you go down some of our honor, one hundred percent, or a thousand, hundred and seventy.
Yeah, so like fifty four when it was reclassified or when it was. No, it doesn't make sense.
Is there any way you can get a different program for keeping track of drainage? Unfortunately, there isn't any.
That is the way drainage is too. It's according to the units and um your percentage you have to type in. Which translate your percent according to the units and the total bill. So you pay, I, it's.
Strange is difficult.
Simplify that when they came up with drainage difference, didn't they?
Parcel.
Yeah.
Of the total bill and Sandy pays one percent of the total bill. So then that percent is all conglomerated into a hundred percent, which would be your total, like when the. District was established, say ten thousand, or when it was reclassified, they redo the billing or the units at that point too.
Wow.
It's. It's weird.
So you. I just, I don't know. Table is called next meeting.
Calculated.
And.
You'll have.
Yeah.
I need to.
I'm going by that.
Calculate these percents and put them into the computer.
One of the few counties that do a lot of things all the way.
Well, and I think the. It does simple by everything, everybody gets to just bill once.
Yeah, understandably.
And then they have September to pay it. And we do have March billings, we do. And we, yeah.
Well, the, if you look at it, on the dollar amount of the different districts, some of them that get up there in the. Fifty, thirty, seven, forty, fifty, sixty thousand, that was the gist of it. Well, they have the ability to, to pay. Now, I realize that's across the entire district, not in one person. It's across the entire district. But if someone does have a larger amount, they'll just give them the ability to pay it. Like Dave said, a guy with a hundred thousand dollar, he doesn't want six percent interest through the year. He wants, if he has the money, he wants to pay it.
Yeah, right.
Those are the same, those are the same people that don't have operating loans at the bank.
I mean, the interest re- needs to be reevaluated too.
What's that? Unfortunately, the house six percent is pretty cheap. Yeah.
Right, right, exactly.
But you have the guy that doesn't take out loans.
But when I started, it was eight percent, and then shortly after it got lower.
Well, this is a discussion item anyway, so there's no action.
No, we're not acting, is there?
So we just need to have, Rick, you're gonna look into.
Yeah, I'll talk to John and Doug about it.
I guess my other concern is just that we just have that million dollar one.
Right.
And I'm just afraid that some of these guys, if they get another one, they're gonna come in.
Cause they got one a year ago.
Yeah.
Then he got hammered again with another one.
In the spring.
Are you talking?
Six. Cause they, they put in this huge pipe a couple of years ago, over there by Thor, North Thor.
Yes.
Well, then about maybe a year and a half later, they had a big. The old main collapsed by next to the road, remember that fix we had on that road, and that got pretty expensive. And then they did a lot of pipe work on Sixth Main, the ditch. So here they get him, they pay a huge one, and then a couple of years later, they get another fairly large one, because of all the work that was done on Sixth.
It's been, well, right here, it says Sixth of Main, twenty eighteen.
Yeah.
Main, that's, that's sixty eight thousand, um, almost. Right there, and then you got six up here for number thirty two, so you're looking at ninety. Yeah, a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
It's almost a hundred thousand.
That's what I say.
Just with that one, you got, so that's half of what's is two hundred thousand is, it's just on six.
Most of that land was in the gentleman's that I was talking about.
Yeah.
Rick, it's major.
Just on a technical note. When do you really have to have the facts, figures, and any submitted bills to, to make this work if you move forward?
We have, we have to have a statement out by February. Well, end of January, actually, plus you have thirty days notice before it's due. And second half is due start, technically second half is March first, is when you start paying it. You have a whole month of March to pay it.
Right.
But then in April, penalty starts.
Yeah.
And so that's the thing too, they don't pay it by March three first. April, they start getting penalties.
Right.
So.
But I mean.
This is something to consider after that million dollar one, and maybe these farmers are, maybe they're all happy with it, but.
I doubt they're happy paying it, they, they don't like paying interest.
No, they don't.
That, that was just, that really.
And that's what we hear most about is the interest.
The interest and then the timeframe, like Sandy said, that don't let stuff languish there, even smaller amounts for ten years.
Yeah, when it's dry, they don't think near much about drainage is when it's wet.
Yeah.
Let's.
Okay.
We could get a cabinet more information.
Yeah, and Rick will look into it.
Yeah. Yep, alright, perfect. We'll put that on next week's agenda then.
See you later.
Uh, committee reports for everybody.
Dave, we need to go first.
I get to go first. Okay, uh. Last week, uh Tuesday, I had a VA in Humboldt, you know, pay the bills and. All that good stuff down there. And Wednesday, we had a, a call for the uh Humboldt County Housing Development Corporation. Uh, good group and changes and stuff, and that's the two that I had.
I didn't have any official extracurricular meetings last week.
I didn't either, other than that housing thing that was. Humboldt County Housing.
Uh, the only one I had was uh. Friday, and it was a Zoom call for CFR on that sprinkler system that froze in Des Moines. Um, I'm trying to find an email here that. Our last food pantry for the year is coming up uh.
Eleven.
The eleventh.
January, yep.
So that will be normal time for thirty four o'clock, people get there, four thirty to start donating. Four thirty to whenever, um. Then we have to go through, I gotta get a hold of the ministers, so they send the stuff to the. Fairgrounds about, using their facility, so, eleventh at four thirty.
Yep, and I got it here.
Thank you, dude.
Food pantry eleven.
I didn't have anything last week, but the week, we, four on the twentieth, um, the zoning comprehensive with Midas was left. I don't know if I didn't say it or if I, I don't remember. But anyway, it was interesting. The zoning things they had, I guess, like three different meetings that day. So it was just. For that one, it was myself, Jim, and Michelle Slater from um the hospital. Yeah, we just left kitty cats. We all should have just had the meeting there and went and moved.
Somewhere else. But Bruce and Nora Dave that always go physically, how soon do the outlying communities come and pick this? Food up, take back listening to these usually, that day, I know that day, but about what time?
Well, depending on when the truck comes for. Cause they try to get their early. An hour or two.
The two, are they there by two?
Oh, easily. It's usually gone, but then they're usually have the food on the ground at like eleven o'clock.
Okay.
And they have big uh insulated tarps that they cover the cold stuff.
And then usually the people that from outlying areas.
I think Diane. Figures out what time and stuff's there, and then.
Let's, I know.
They come down, and then they take it up to the Humboldt Homes also. They put a list out at the Humboldt Homes for people that, that uh. Want food, and then they take it to each different.
Yeah.
Pod.
Yeah.
And leave it at the card place or whatever, where they're gathering, and they put them on the tables and.
Yeah, so I get it. That's working really good, but that, I need to go help a little more, because they get the food and then. Kind of like some other places where they're sort of volunteers, so. Well, just to sort it out and get everything ready, because they get it, then their, their. Man slash woman power is a little short when they get it back. They had a real good. When you, when they first started doing that, it, boy, it was great, and then people started kind of petering out. So, and you would guess that would be around the early afternoon.
Yeah, the winter time, it's harder to get people to come.
Yep.
That's understandable. So I just wanna make sure to, to help them all of that.
There anything else that we need to?
Are we going to put anything down on a timeframe for budget? Are you set up for? Your people, have they started signing up for dates or?
Have you sent that out yet? I've been working on valuations.
Okay.
Changes this year.
Don't wait till the last minute.
Yeah.
Get it out, get going.
Yeah, there we go.
And I'm.
It's, everybody dreads it, but it's reality. Yeah, only hurts for a little while.
Yeah.
Even more.
I'm, I'm gonna be interested, listen to the news at noon, as your interpretation of what the drainage discussion we had. Cause you were sitting there like, oh my god.
Oh, you had to Google levy, right?
Yeah.
I'm just, I was reading your mind and.
Just to ask.
I know where you're at.
Yeah, exactly. We had a, all had a learning for.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Hey, all those in favor?
Hi.
Alright, Washington Kennedy's words.